2018 Dubal City Council meeting. Would you please rise for the flagpole like my councilmember Michelle Hoag?
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
I'm here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Nappland.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Yes.
We have a call.
Thank you. Under additions or corrections to the agenda, under consent agenda, please add payroll for October fifth, 2018 in the amount of $160,116.85, claims in the amount of $685.922. Under unfinished business, remove item number one, AB-1858, contract asset management system. Does anyone else, would any councilmembers like to speak this evening? Okay. Do we have any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Councilmember Walker.
I have one discussed previously in committee under consent, a family amendment to the special committee of the whole minutes for October ninth, I believe, go down to that. It would be item two, under the meeting summary of that meeting, in reference to the transportation benefit district. The amendment I move to include is to replace the last sentence of that paragraph with the following words. The last sentence has been to be replaced with, "Council opted to consider a sales tax option as an agenda item to occur at a forthcoming meeting of the transportation benefit district."
Any objections? All right. Any other additions or corrections?
I'd like to add an agenda item under new business for regular discussion in between one and two.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Some of them.
Six.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. We do not have any application of contracts under the declaration of urgency, so we'll move on to comments from the audience. If you'd like to speak this evening, you'll have three minutes, and feel free to approach the podium and provide your name if you're with an organization, your organization name, and the address. Thank you. Laura Smith, 10626 Snohomish Corner of East, Snohomish Valley Community Network. First, I'd like to thank you all for your continued dedication to our citizens as you're working through a budget process, fun time of year. And seeing I look around, I've seen smiles, and I think that's a good sign. My public comment tonight really is, please maintain, and we're considering increasing funding for human services. Human services are not a nice thing that cities do. They are an essential part of the infrastructure, no different than your bridges and your buildings. They help support children, youth, families, and seniors. Again, human services are a part of your infrastructure, and as one of your citizens, I hope that you're looking at that piece of our infrastructure as well. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
Shanti Shrigar with Dubal Flowers and Gifts, 15702 Main Street, North East, Dubal. I am here on behalf of the City Chamber of Commerce, Dubal, and I have decided to bring the attention to our national notice of annual meeting on Thursday, the eighth of November, from six to eight at the visitor's center, as they're hoping some of you will attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to scheduled items. Under my report this evening, I'm going to kick it off with the Sound Cities Association 2018 Call for Nominations to Regional Boards and Committees. I sent an email out to folks a few weeks ago to let you know that we need to make sure that we're not accidentally doubling up the applications, or else they automatically get tossed for individual committees, and so I wanted to find out who's applying for what committees this year and make sure that we don't have any overlap. I will be reapplying for PSRC Executive Board, King County Regional Transit Committee, and of course, I'm still on the Board of Directors. That term has another year, and I don't know that I'll be able to take on any more standing committees next year. Councilmember McHenry, you are on a committee this year. Do you plan on reapplying?
Either on that one, or I still want to look at the other ones and kind of see if there's another one that I can help serve on, but I can update a little later.
Councilmember Brett Nicky?
I think that they need a time where I'm actually aware.
Okay. Councilmember Nappland?
I'm a secondary. Do I need to reapply as the alternate?
Everyone needs to reapply, and often what happens if you're an alternate and somebody was off as a primary, they shift people into the primary spots. So, that would not be for the Public Issues Committee.
Right.
Public Issues Committee is a separate one.
Okay. That's okay. So, I wasn't talking about one of these things. I apologize.
No, it's a good question. Mayor President Meyer?
I need to review the list, unfortunately. A lot of them are on Wednesday. Everybody works on Wednesday.
Understand. Councilmember Hoag?
I have been on the King County Flood Advisory Committee, and I did get an email saying that it was a two-year commitment.
Yours might be.
But I would like to stay on another year, so I'm happy with that, and I've been in the Sound Cities Association pick person, but I don't know how the process is, but I'm interested in doing it again, but.
The pick is up to council. I know I was the representative for eight years, so unless council wants somebody different, it goes council typically just kind of lets you go. So, we can discuss that in November, December, and we'll put that on the agenda. Councilmember Walker?
Won't be applying to any of the SCA committees, but I do encourage council to try those out. They are very informative and important in terms of their regional structure, politics, and budgeting. The PSRC, they're just not regional councils, was the King County committees, are also very important, so I've served in those for many years. I am going to continue to serve on the Farm Fish Flood Advisory Committee, the local integrating organization through Snohomish County, and I'll consider my role in the watershed form year before the end of the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Remington?
I'm a backup on one. I'm a watershed committee and just signed up for another committee that means for about three years up in Everett. So, I looked through that entire list, and there are several things, I think, that do relate to our city, and I wasn't sure who else was on any of those committees, or whether or not those would be sufficiently important for us as a city to put time in there versus elsewhere. So, I think the short of it is that I didn't see anything that I felt driven to assign it for right now, but I'm certainly open if you or others say, hey, there's one that we just, we need to be on as a city, and I am looking at that if someone has feedback for me in the next year, so because we've got a pretty timely, easier-to-get information then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. And then, if anybody comes up with anything you're thinking of in the next few days, if you could route it to me, I'll make sure if there's a duplicate that I contact the other councilmembers, so we don't run into a forum issue. And then, if you need any assistance with your applications, please let me know. Thank you. Moving on, my report is slightly long this evening, since I did not give my report at our last meeting due to timing to get out of the building. Obviously, most of my time is being consumed with budget continuing even after proposed budget. There's lots of things that come up between council, and you discover things as time goes on, as it is a living, breathing document, so we've been spending a significant amount of time on that. I did have a meeting with the Boys and Girls Club of Snohomish County. Some folks are aware, they provided a summer camp in town for one week last summer. They're interested in providing additional program this year. They got a late start last year, and so we're kicking it off early, and we'll be bringing them to the table to see what they can do and help them through the process. Big Rock Ballfields, we are piloting open lighted hours for the, the first one was last week, the next one is coming up this Friday and the nineteenth. There will be another one on October twenty-sixth and November second from six to nine p.m., and that is open to anyone that wants to go play in the lights. So, hopefully, folks will go out and utilize that free time. I also have the privilege of being asked to participate as a panelist in a webinar for the Association of Washington Cities and the Municipal Research Services Corporation on how to be an elected official, and was able to participate on that with councilmember Ed Prince, and he's also council president from the city of Retton, and John Caulfield, the city manager from the city of Lakewood. So, it was a great experience, and if somebody wants the link, I would be happy to ask AWC if they can provide a complimentary link for folks to watch it. On last Wednesday, I had the privilege of, with Kardashian Mayor Kimless, of kicking off the Hidden in Plain Sight event that was put on by the River View School District, Snohomish Valley Community Network, and Dubal Police District, or Dubal Police Department. I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, but the part that I did stay for was quite informative. There were over fifty people there, and it was an excellent event, and I really appreciate all the work that went into that. On last Friday, Eastside Transportation Partnership met. We have a presentation on maximum constraint for folks that aren't aware, when the viaduct gets torn down, when the bus tunnel closes in Seattle, and when other construction happens throughout the region, we're going to be really stretched as far as transportation goes. There's been a lot of planning that's gone into it, but we're still going to have likely some big regional transportation issues during the big construction projects. Today, I'm up at the YMCA to discuss potential options for services in 2019. They are interested again, so we'll be setting up a meeting with them in the near future, and then also bringing them in with the Boys and Girls Club to make sure that the two organizations are complementing one another if they do fully decide to provide services this summer. We have the Sound Cities Association Board meeting tomorrow. King County Regional Transit Committee is hosting a workshop, and again, we are getting another briefing on maximum constraint. Thursday, I'll be attending the Regional Transit Committee Summit, and as a side note, for those who aren't aware, the Snohomish Valley Trail to the north is nearly complete. Just have a few items to get off the checklist, and we'll be scheduling or cutting for that. Finally, I was invited to serve on the 522 Executive Committee by the city of Monroe. That committee will be meeting on Thursday, and that's really looking at all of the transportation problems and projects that need to get done to help fix 522, which, if it was fixed, would in turn help some of our pass-through issues. So, while it's outside of the city, it's an important regional issue that all of our community members have to deal with. And that's all I have. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Walker?
Thanks for attending the Trail Summit. It's interesting as well, finding members of our community what we can do to continue to encourage King County for the future design and planning of the full extension of the Snohomish Valley Trail to the county line, because as many of us are aware, Snohomish County is in the planning phase of that segment as well, a bit ahead of King County, actually. And so, but I also understand King County has a different funding model for trails, that they occur like a lugging process, right? Parcelling. And I assume that will be discussed at that meeting, I thought what it would be, but how we can hopefully encourage King County to include design, at least, and other forward-moving components of what needs to be done, so ultimately, a project can be built, and it won't take many years, but I think what I've understood is that making certain that that parcelling includes provisions for that trail and that extension, maybe, I think that might be something that if we need to, to provide a resolution support, or some aspect of making them fully aware that that's very important to our community.
And I have had meetings with the elected officials up in Snohomish County. There's two different elected officials working on two different segments in Snohomish County, and one of those segments would get to the city of Monroe, and so there is good news, since they're a little bit further ahead of us, because that can push other entities to help us get that connection done. We get that connection done, it goes all the way to Skans County, which would be absolutely incredible. So, we intend to put a lot of effort into that and see what we can do to keep moving forward. Thank you. Yep. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Moving on, we did not have any council reports this evening, so we'll go ahead and move on to the administration report. Ms. Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Brett Nicky.
Thank you.
So, this evening's update will be pretty quick. Some fantastic news. We're officially working towards getting a new public works director. That went live partially last Friday, but fully on Monday, and today, we have, at least that I know of, two applicants. That's pretty good, considering we're two days into the recruitment, so I was really excited to hear that. Let's see. This is, I will just censor, I'm going to just turn that off, because it is a pretty short update. I did want to bring to your attention, we received a notice today, and some of you may have been following this. King County decided and approved they were going to co-op essentially a franchise agreement from cities to use some of their areas where we potentially pass through their jurisdictions. So, for example, our water line passes through county. So, the good news is, we are flooded, and effective today, it's pretty much on hold, pending litigation. I don't know what communities took them to Superior Court, but somebody did, and the county did not prevail, but the county is going to appeal that, and they already have. But at least until that time, we don't have to pay additional dollars to the county. So, that's good news. Our portion wasn't a lot of money, but every five thousand dollars counts. As you know, yesterday evening, hopefully, you saw on social media that we had a pretty large water main break out of the six-inch. We lost well into 2.3 million gallons of water in a very short amount of time, and this is off of Kennedy. And under our 2019 and 2020 budget proposal, under the Water Department, a proposal to replace that line was in there, and so right now, we have a, I'll call it just a temporary patch of line. When they went into it, there was root intrusion, and then the actual water line was missing, so we'll see some photos. I asked Sean to go ahead and give us another one. We're starting to move that particular project forward, so we can at least start the design, so that we can not just have a patch there, but we can fix it. Otherwise, we just are going to go in and fix a piece that's not too long, but that was already on our budget horizon. He wants to go ahead and move forward, I should say, overbooks wants to move forward on that. We have additional bandwidth within our professional services, so that we can start that process without a budget amendment, and by the time we do the design, it'll, you know, we'll finish that up, and then the budget will be enacted in nineteen and twenty, with potentially that project in there, if council approves it. But he wanted to at least get something upon the books, because you just never know when something's going to break, because it was on the pending CAP. We thought we'd go ahead and at least move the first touch forward, acknowledge that we had a fairly large break, and that we did have nine hundred and one calls, and we did have a lot of debris go over the roadway, and the only reason that we caught it early because we were on overtime out on the sewer project on Bay Rock Road, and they were still in town, so we didn't have to do the call-out, which meant we could have waited additional hours and had, and lost twice or more of that water. So, it's a highly pressurized zone, there's ninety PSI in it, and we lost just over 2.3 million gallons in a very short time.
Ms. Thomas, we didn't get to talk about this before, but can you please ask Mr. Tozer to give an estimate on what the emergency repairs cost, as well as the cost of the water, so that we can get a better idea of what not fixing the deferred maintenance costs in emergency repairs? Please, thank you. Does anyone else, Councilmember Walker?
Did she finish writing? Okay. Was there any other damage? Did it wash out anything, this story to pavement or?
So, yes. So, we had three homes have water go into their crawl spaces. We had a lot of debris go over Kennedy. Luckily, it didn't hit the highway, but it definitely did some incising in a couple of areas, so I'm assuming that we might get some damage claims out of it. Luckily, we still have the backer truck that we rent on a yearly basis, so we were able to go backer out a lot of the debris. So, really, all things considering, we had staff here, we didn't have to make a call-out of all, we were already on overtime. We have the backer truck. We got really lucky, because this could have been a pretty big deal.
So, we'll have a better idea of full cost of the event maybe by the next meeting?
Yes. Yeah. And it really, I was very appreciative of Sean, because he put this together in thirty minutes, for me to be able to get it, because I saw it, and they showed me the pictures, and I'm like, whoa, should we be talking to council? Considering this was a much larger event than even I knew about, but when I left, it got ten o'clock last night, the crew was still out. I think that's really the most important pieces, unless you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation by Ms. Janice Corbin of Sound and Flood Solutions.
May I?
Yes.
I always like to ask if I can approach the bench. Sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I come to you today to talk about your organizational health, meaning your internal workings in the city. I own my company, Sound Deployment Solutions. I've actually been in business for about twenty years, working primarily with government entities, with workplace challenges, and all things related to employees, from human resources to selection, to labor relations, and development, or preparing for all the things that go with that, including litigation. Before that, I was an assistant chief at Seattle Police. The last six and a half years, I had all things related to human resources, all hiring and firing, and all timekeeping and all the rest of it. It is something that I am fascinated by and dedicated to. I was asked to come to the city, or referred to the mayor by the law firm that was representing some of the employment-related issues that the city had, and asked to come forward and help with managing some of those challenges. So, my presentation is to talk about, I do have it on PowerPoint, but I did make copies, so it sounds like that might be easier for all of us, so we can just walk through the PowerPoint on my end. My presentation today is about, you are a city that's in transition. You are a small town making the transition, perhaps, to some of the city activities and functions. Your employees, some of whom have been here for quite some time, the city's not always been able to invest in developing some of the things that are necessary in the employment world. You are not unique in that way, but what happens is, then, problems arise, and when problems arise, and you are aware of those, and we won't go into detail, we have to work backwards with putting in some of the structure and employment practices that are needed to make sure employees understand what it means to work in a government entity. So, I'll talk a little bit about what is a healthy organization, what are the symptoms, and then what is the benefit for you as city leaders to invest in supporting the development of a healthier workplace. On the second slide, which is on the first page, the symptoms of a city in transition. One of the cities I'm currently working with is a city that's not even as large as yours. It's a little city less center, just north of Vancouver. In fact, I'll be down there later this week. This is a city that's expecting, or experiencing some of the same growing pains when we have a small-town feeling and a small-city quality of life, and we continue to grow, and we continue to have complexity in employment practices. What happens, and this is reference to employee workers, because I've had some exposure to your employees, is there is a lack of a common goal or understanding. Departments often work in silos, instead of talking across the aisle, sharing information, learning information. Employees are often uncertain about their professional responsibilities, such as ethics. We are required to be ethical. We are supposed to be above our approach in government, and yet, we've had some ethics violations as of lately. I said to one of your supervisors last week at a meeting that their job was to educate elected officials about the complexity of the business that they provide to the citizens, and not just expect city council to know. They were surprised. They said, if city council wants to know, they should ask me. I said, no, that's kind of not how it works. You need to give them information so they can make good decisions. They come here of their own free will and their own time, and so that's one of our responsibilities as a city employee. It's also one of our responsibilities as a city employee to not take advantage of government entities. So, that's one thing. Citywide programs are not always embraced by employees and workgroups. This goes back to the silo thinking. And resolutions to problems are most often reactionary. Some of what's gone on for you in the world of employment and your workforce has been reactionary, and with reactionary comes risk, increased risk. So, we have to start, or you do as decision-makers, decide, do we continue to live with the uncertainty and the risk, or do we get ahead of that curve and manage risk? I come from a school of thought of managing risk as best as possible. I certainly can't necessarily predict when the water line will break, but it will, and what do I do in those cases? Symptomatic behavior and performance is the next slide. Productivity is mediocre. I've met some of your folks, not all by any means, but some, and I would say that's, my younger brother is in government, he says, I have to work hard, I have to work till I retire, but I don't have to work hard. I told him that that's a government thinking that I don't find acceptable. I would say that some of the folks I've met feel the same way. I don't have to work hard, but I can just show up to work. And really, we need to be getting as much as possible from your employees. There is a lack of the innovation and new processes. Errors, when there's not clear direction, when people are not held accountable, when we don't resolve conflicts or differences, and employees are uncertain about what's expected of them, errors are repeated and recycled. We make the same mistakes over and over. And we don't have a performance evaluation system in this city, so you are highly at risk of having repeated problems, because nobody's having the conversation until there's a crisis. Your management team's spread thin right now. There's only so much they can do. Here's the next one. Your conflicts and complaints are rapid or they increase. So, you will have more complaints if there's not clarity, not feedback, not goals, not direction, not oversight. Your complaints will increase. Either the kind of complaints that end up in litigation, like discrimination, workplace violence, or two people can't work together, so we have to separate them. I put them in different corners of the building, and I've been in your Public Works Building. There aren't too many corners in that building, so we've got to think about how we resolve conflict, not let it manage us. Good staff will leave. If we continue to have challenges in the workplace, and we don't have a plan for how we're going to manage it, some of your good folks will move on. And right now, that we as a city, or as a state, and we as employers, are experiencing the boomer shuffle, is what I call it. shuffle, is what I call it. I'm a boomer, so I get to say that. We are seeing folks retire boomers, my age group, ten thousand a day. So many of the more senior members of the team are retiring, and we are being replaced with Generation X, which only represents twenty percent of the population, and Millennials, which represent about forty-five percent. And even though I'm excited about the Millennials, they're bright, they wanted to make a difference, they don't have a lot of experience. And what this means is, you need more clarity for that particular generation. If you think back when you were their age, you didn't have a lot of experience either. And somebody took you under their wing and helped mentor you and give you information. This is true with all the cities I work in, and I work across the states. I'm in the Tri-Cities next week, and I'm in Bellevue tomorrow, so I see a lot of it. And we're all struggling to fill vacancies. We don't have enough people applying for the jobs, or we don't have people who bring the experience. So you really need to hang on to your good folks because they're going to be hard to replace. A lot of those days when we can go, we'll just hire somebody else, that just isn't true anymore. You'll see increased absenteeism and increased accidents if people are not certain where they stand. You'll see an increase in citizens' complaints because the folks at the counter don't have all the information or don't know how to direct citizens. This comes from training and development of employees. And again, you'll see increased incidence of misconduct. The fact is that statistics tell us, and the Gallup surveys tell us, that nineteen percent of your employees are prone to not complying with regulation and becoming involved in misconduct. So nineteen percent. It's as predictable as rain, sadly. What we have to do is develop the skills around them, meaning the people, the better, the folks who really do want to do good work. And we have to be able to hold this particular dysfunctional group accountable without exception. With all the employers I work with, there is a nineteen percent. And that might be one person. It might be two. I have seen there were many more, that the behavior is very contagious. In fact, one of the employees I spoke with said, yeah, that happens here, but it happens over in that department, too. So it's already going on where we have a lack of accountability and responsibility. You turn the page, we'll talk about the organization's response. I am going to give you some solutions tonight, not just scare you to death. The organization's response when workplaces are unsettled or there are problems is that we typically do things like develop strategic plans. And although I think strategic plans are a useful tool, I think we make them overly complicated and we don't always communicate them to employees. We do it in a more sophisticated way and not in a simple way. One of my cardinal rules for a strategic plan is make it efficient and effective and help the employees understand how they support that. We do financial overdrive analysis. We analyze all of our finances. We bring in new technology. Unfortunately, we don't always train people on how to use it, so they use small pieces of it or they go back to the old way. They focus on tasks and deliverables, but not where do we go next time? So the employees are not learning how to do problem solving. We have disjointed training. I do a fair amount of training for all the insurance companies that insure all the public employers, transportation, counties. I have county tomorrow to your WCIA and ADWCC. And we send them to a training class, and we think the employee's going to get it and everything will be better. That's a disjointed training. We need to have collective training on what everybody's expected to do. We have conflict, complaints, strain, union relations, and ultimately, all of this ends up in litigation. I don't want to scare you, but in nineteen ninety-five, when I went back to be an assistant chief and managed that operation, I had two point five million dollars worth of litigation on my desk my very first day. It was what I inherited from the former chief who had that responsibility. Today, that would be close to twenty million dollars in litigation. Litigation in employment arenas as it relates to labor relations, complaints, and employee issues is quite expensive and a little bit risky for the most part. So how do we fix it? And that's what I really want to spend some time on. I want to give you a chance to ask questions. The elements of a healthy organization, next slide, or the workplace culture includes structure. You're missing performance manual or performance evaluations. You're missing employment policies and procedures. The chief's doing a great job, as is Laura, in trying to piecemeal that, but you don't have policies and procedures or employee handbook. And absent that information and performance evaluations, you do not have a system that is clearly communicating to employees what's expected. We have to talk about processes. Processes to me is how we work and play well with each other. It is not negotiable for me that employees choose not to work with each other. That isn't how that works. I don't care whether you like each other or not, you work at a job. And in government, pretty likely, we're going to hire somebody you may not like. They may not be like you. And so we need to teach employees how to communicate with each other and resolve conflict. We have to develop people. They need basic skills again, and that's what contributes to a healthy organization. If you invest in that, then you'll be able to be superstars. Problems will be solved. Employees will take on those issues themselves. But we are often unwilling or unable to invest, and I know you have a very tight budget. I'm not trying to get you to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. I just want you to think about what kinds of investments you want to make in developing your workgroup. The lack of agreement and the value of doing it sometimes prevents us from being on the same page. Some people say, you should be grateful you have a job. You should just be grateful you have a job and you should do what you're told to do. It doesn't work like that anymore. It just doesn't. We have different generations. We have more demands placed on our government than we've ever had before. We have a higher level of expectation of transparency, and then we have all the things that go with it. We have more employment laws than we've ever had. When I was in human resources a long time ago, I was going to say forty years ago, that's about right, we were picnic planners, not anymore. We have to know all the laws and regulations, and we have to make sure that supervisors have that knowledge and power. It is timely to change workplace culture, and it isn't cheap. But it's more expensive to do, to pay the litigation and to pay the complexity of the impact of it. It takes time. I've been in the city of the center two years. On an error basis, I'm not there every single week, but I'm there twice a month at minimum, and will be one more year ago. We've rewritten all the job descriptions, the performance evaluations. We fired two of their directors, and we're successful. We're rehiring. We're teaching employees how to communicate and problem solving, and we're not tolerating silo thinking. They're just too small. We have to work together. So there's a lack of time and money invested. It will require most of those in the government system and all of U.S. leaders to let go of past change pressures and hurt feelings and focus on forward moving. We have to help those resistant employees understand it's a new way that we do business now in the city. It will require leaders and managers, next page, to endorse fully in the idea of giving attention to developing the workforce. You don't even have to use the glitze terminology, healthy organization. You can just say, develop the workforce, and we all are on the same team. That's a good message, too, because that works as well. It's worth it, and you have to ask yourself that. It will require that you, as employees and managers alike, be vulnerable and accept what in fact are some of the problems and be willing to look for solutions. So that means we all do have to be on the same page, and we have to follow the same expectations of how we interact with each other. And I demand professionalism even when we don't agree. That's what we should expect from our employees. We would never find it acceptable for our employees to disrespect a citizen even when the citizen is not right. That is true, isn't it? That citizens are sometimes not right in what they want from the city? It absolutely is. It means they want something we can't give them, but we give to all, and we need to be consistent, so we need to be on the page. Here are the characteristics of a healthy organization. The lack of politics and decision-making. No reference to you, but we don't play sides and we're all on the same team. The police department doesn't get something, Public Works doesn't get. They have different responsibilities, so they may get different equipment, but we treat them with just as much respect and honor. Consistent commitment to the same goals. Let's keep it simple. Increase our efficiencies. Deliver good customer service. And in fact, really work hard on delivering strong mandated services. Those are the things that all cities are required to do. Productivity and job relevance and flexibility, employees strive to achieve. They get excited because now they realize there is something clear. The same Gallup survey talks about nineteen percent of your workforce are dysfunctional. Twenty-six percent of your employees are superstars. We have some of them in this room, who always step out and work till ten o'clock at night, six nights a week, practically. I've gotten emails from Laura on Sundays. But fifty-five percent of your employees are easily influenced by whoever is getting the most stage. So if the complainer, and nineteen percent of you are getting more airtime and more of your attention, without being responsible for their behavior, the fifty-five percent will start to mimic the same behavior. And our job in leadership, and my job if I'm going to be working with a city to help you change the culture, is to get the fifty-five percent to see the fact of what it is and to start mimicking the behavior of the twenty-six percent who have been really hardworking and committed. We all come to public service to make a difference in the community. That's really why we're here. And so that's one of the goals. At least it's the reason I did what I did for twenty-two years, and it's what I still do. Because I worked at Amazon, and I could probably work there full-time, not nearly as much fun, as working in government, because government's critical to all of us. And the employees are know what's expected of them. We shouldn't have a question of an employee being unethical. They should know that they should never use city equipment for personal gain. Next page, characteristics of a healthy culture, trust. I'm not sure you have trust with some of the employees in the workgroup with all the changes that you've had, but trust is critical for us to work with each other. Employees know and learn how to manage conflict. I always tell the story that I grew up with two brothers, and the way that we resolve conflict, my parents were both working, is he who bled first won. That's not a way to resolve conflict. Unfortunately, sometimes adults that come to your workplace still have that approach to managing conflict, when really, conflict can be very healthy if it's managed. We're going to have different perspectives and opinions. What we have to focus on is listening, finding a common goal, and then continuing our work relationship with each other. They're comfortable in managing it. Meetings conclude with clear-cut objectives versus what I call the washing machine recycle. Meetings where we talk about it, you talk about it, then we don't come up with anything at the end. We don't even have a plan if we're going to get more information. And I'm talking about workgroups again. Team members reach a grievance around decisions and deliverables. I have a couple of really easy conflict resolutions that we use often. What are we trying to achieve and work backwards versus you're right, I'm wrong, vice versa, and whoever outtalks the other one gets it? One of the healthy signs is everybody expects to be accountable. And you've seen enough, twenty-six percent of your workforce will come forward when there's a mistake, and they'll tell you. Or if there's a problem, or if there's something that they think you should know about, they'll come in and own it right away and tell you what they tried to work with. I need more of the employees to do that so that you, as a city, can be more nimble when responding to needs, whether it's growth in life or communities upset about something or you had a difficult customer, whatever the case may be, or we're trying to problem solve in an organization that's growing and developing. Other characteristics, everyone's clear about what success looks like. I think if we went to some of the departments and asked, I'm not sure they would talk to you, what does success look like? What does it look like when I've done a good job? Who will know? I will know, but what other people know? Employees are encouraged to not be held back by mistakes, but learn from them and not repeat the same mistake. Mistakes are going to happen, and we all know that. We're all human. It's not the mistake that's such a significant thing unless it's the third time it's the same mistake, then we have a different problem. And then we can be more consistent and affirming. So I'm not going to spend too much more going into what are the pieces? We stop things like recycling, which you always have a frequent complainer. That's one of the things that we talk about. Let's go to the page five, the second slide down. What's the value to the city? And as elected officials, you hear from the community when they've had a not positive experience with a city employee. I hope you hear from the community when they had a positive one as well. But when there's confusion in the workforce, you're likely to in fact have not such favorable results from some or all, I don't think all, but some of your employees. When we invest in developing our workgroup, we automatically see a decline in complaints of discrimination and harassment and the potential litigation that goes with it. The EEOC, which is the federal agency that receives discrimination harassment complaints, estimates that less than five percent of the hostile work environment complaints ever come to fruition. That's because the word hostile is confusing. I don't like my coworkers, so I file a complaint. And you still have to investigate and look into it versus what's the complaint between the two of you and how do we resolve it? Poor performance and misconduct are managed successfully. One of the things that I like to do is manage poor performance. Either I want the employee to get the skills and development to be better in their performance or help them leave the organization, but do it correctly so that we don't face the potential of litigation. We have higher customer service because our employees are more content and they're knowledgeable and more confident, and certainly your supervisors are. Not all of your, I talked to your inner Public Works director today, good guy, but needed some clarity on where can I go with some of this? But at least he's trying to make some differences. Hopefully, and it almost always does, result in improved management labor relations. When things are unsettled, we have the game called gotcha, where one side says, I'm going to do this, and the other one says, well, maybe not, and then we go back and forth. And then, the most important to me, you retain good people. You will not be able to work these two co-administrators for ten hours a day, six days a week. It's just not a reasonable plan. The mayor's talking to me about how to be help because they can't. They're really hardworking folk, but they will get tired of the help. So that would give you some structure at the bottom, because I know my half an hour is already made up. But if we go over to page six, we can finish up. The ideas that I have are helping the city population, meaning the employee workforce, move forward. Creation of the mission, value, and primary goals on an annual basis. These are critical when we're resolving conflict, when we're trying to determine priorities, when we're trying to make decisions that we don't have necessarily, everything doesn't have a decision answer, when we're trying to do problem solving. Development of your personnel policies and employee handbooks. The chief is really good at this. He uses all the resources, but we need to be able to support that. And even after those policies are developed, you're going to have to train all the employees in what it means, because your employees do not know what that means. What are the ethics policy? What is misconduct? And that's to your disadvantage. So even after the policies are developed, we're going to have to train employees on that. I very reached out to WCIA to ask if they can help us with some training. Update your job descriptions. We're going to need training for your supervisors so they will know how to manage poor performance and how they'll be able to coach an employee in the areas of conduct. We'll have to talk about what is discipline look at and what are some of the high-risk behaviors that put the city at risk? So the investment will mean safe white training. Get, I think WCIA can help you with some of that, but that's going to be something you all need to invest in as well. Your policy development. I'm from the school of thought that I'd rather be ahead of it than behind it. So if I can have policies and employees understand what it is that they're engaged in and making a better choice, the employee who chooses not to comply with policies may have an unfortunate choice, but the city was right in giving them information. Conflict management training, if I If I had a gift for every employer this period, teach our folks how to have those difficult conversations with each other. I wish you could turn your radio down. All the way to the famous one in fire departments. Although I realize you don't have a fire department. They get angry at each other because one shift didn't restock their rig. Every workplace has that. You can put the filing back. You can put paper in the copy machine. All the way up to the big issues, like how can we get more budget than me? Give them some decision-making skills. Not just, this is what we did last time. But moving forward. If you're going to grow, you need to do that. In summary, helping workplaces capture our cultures. Again, a clear and simply stated set of goals. Leadership will need to invest in time and resources and demonstrate the ability to use the same tools. So that we can mirror it and model it. Long and short-term training goals. This will take a while. You can't be training every day, because we have other business to conduct. And all employees will need to again commit to complying with the behavior and resolving their differences. So I bring to you the idea that as a city, you may want to invest in this. I know your budget's tight, so I do understand that. But if you want your workplace to match your goals as a city, then we're going to need to invest in your workplace, in all its ways. Questions from you about what I've spoken about, or about me and the work I do? Let's remember comment.
I appreciate everything that you shared with us, and I can see it being very helpful. You mentioned again, our budget is very tight. And a lot of times, you know, I look at all the plans that we've made, and consultants we've hired to give us advice, and then we're out of money and we never are able to implement. So I think what would be very helpful is if there's a proposal for advice, or for the core services, if it could also come with a typical implementation cost? How much it will cost for possibly your service to help implement? Other training that you would recommend that may be outside of what you do? Times that might need to be invested? Just so that we can understand and not end up just getting that first piece, and then it sits on the counter.
Well, you and I, along with Laura and the chief, have talked about developing that plan. The mayor asked me to bring this information to you, to see if you were willing to look at those other pieces. One, I do work with a lot of the insurance companies, so we try to supplement some of the training in that regard. And we can invite other cities to the training, which also good first some of the costs. When I'm doing this kind of work, I work on a retainer and not on a hourly rate, which is cheaper for all of you. I'm not in this for the money, although I do like to pay my bills. I'm really in this because this to me is fun. This is good work. It makes a difference. Yes, we can assign a budget to it. We can outline the kind of training so that you can see it up close and personal. I appreciate your conservativeness in budget, and I definitely understand those.
To be clear, because this work is costly, we still have to go over our key. There's very few people in the state that actually do this work and have the reputation of Janice's firm. But she's definitely brought up a lot of issues that we've got kind of long-term issues to rebuild our culture and our processes, and risk management, and what have you. So we definitely have to do it after the key as well. I know that she's focused on this right now. But we asked her to come to council to give you an overview. Seemed to be there a lot of questions about what is our workload analysis really would be? And it can be really all-encompassing to change the overall direction of the city.
Other questions?
Mayor Chris O'Meyer.
How would you foresee looking at the organizational structure of the city in terms of, is that part of that, when we get the job classification?
It is, absolutely. When we look at that, what I often find when we have silos, where people are inviding each other, and where there's been long history of unresolved conflict, what we typically do is we have a redundancy of work. So we have the city, one of the cities that I'm working with right now, every single department has its own purchasing process, which drives finance nuts, appropriately so. And so that all should go to finance. So that's the kind of thing that we find, is there a redundancy? Some of that is about fear, some of it is about unresolved conflict, some of it is about clarity of processes. So job descriptions and working with work groups, that comes up pretty quickly. And if we can streamline it, but we have to repair some of the revision stuff first. But I find it, I mean, I'm looking for all of it at the same time. Are there ways that we can be more efficient and effective? What redundancies do we have? What's the barrier to that? It's almost always about relationships or feelings. We have to, I have ceremonies where we put the past in the past, so that we don't continue to recycle it, and you will have resistance. I'll be honest with you, some people can't make this change. So there's almost always some people who just don't like the fact that it's a city. And I used to, you know, twenty years ago, it used to be this way. Nothing that we used to do twenty years ago is the same today. I can't even go to the bank anymore, because it's all in fun. It's just amazing. So, but I'd be happy to put a budget. Of course, we'll comply with the regulations. There's no way I want to serve up with that. Councilmember Ben Niki.
So because we have a strong mayor system, you know, it's an interesting leadership hierarchy that we have. Do you also evaluate, look at our current system, the growth of our city, and where we're at, and kind of give feedback, like what is the best sort of management system that would work?
No, I don't do that. I think that's outside the scope of what you would ask me to do. What I do, and what the mayor's already asked for, is I work with the decision-makers and the mayor and give feedback about, you might think about trying this, but to decide whether you would change a different style of management? No, that has RCWs wrapped around it and regulations. And again, it's outside of my wheelhouse. So, I'm good, but I'm not that good. So it's, I actually love to work with difficult work groups, so I'm at that point in my life where that's where my focus is. So I haven't taken on some of the other things. Councilmember Walker.
Appreciate everything you've had to say today, because it also fascinates me. Part of it, I mean, you can imagine a few days for you to have the last ten years. Because it needs to happen, not here, but mostly everywhere. Organization goes through an era of dysfunction. Unfortunately, I found an excellent company that works about it even beyond your best productivity. All of this here, and that's why I know it's good, my studying, and living, and learning, and getting some gray hair. But I think one of the most important things in how organizational change becomes necessary is it's really kind of that sense of urgency.
Yes.
It's that, it's that knowing you've got to get it done. And that's, appreciate you being here. And I, I think we've got to get it done with a sense of urgency. We've got our own case studies, and our own little culture here, but there's also many others to pull from, of how things have worked and haven't worked, solutions and tools, and other things that can be applied and tried. The other, what you mentioned is also, whatever about experiences, creating a coalition, and that can be, should must start with leadership coalition. As your business worth of what's going to stop? We've got to do this, we've got to do this for our own survival and necessity. For us, that's our community. So I appreciate that. Those are all many things that I wanted to hear from, you know, Citydome. Miss Dias, a few others of the last seven years or so. So I appreciate that. But also, there can be the pitfall of a quick fix. And it's, you know, addressing the symptom and not the issue. And fundamentally, there's always, there's always going to be some component that's not quite as good as, as the vision. And that's why visions are powerful, because you strive to achieve them.
Right, they're what I need to in the future.
Yes. But in your-
Long-term commitment, can I make a question?
This might be a statement of appreciation, but I have a question. In your experience, which I appreciate, where have you seen the best turnaround? How has that been implicated in that culture? Because what I've experienced is, I'm a consultant too, and I get hired for the quick fix a lot. Not in this realm, but I do see people trying to address management issues that way. Not here, but in other realms. That all we need to do is forms of policies and do this or that. But from my experience, it's not really brought in through the entire body internally, as well as externally to the permanent internally, from the individuals in those organizations. It's the system, the symptoms will prove bad. And all the systems and everything else that's been many budget dollars that I've expended on won't necessarily yield the results. So where have you seen a turnaround? Maybe a brief case study, if we have a few minutes.
Meaning examples, or, you know, one of the things that's critical in all of this work is messaging to employees and to all the parties about what we're doing. And I'm happy to give you references in this regard. I actually worked for three years as a consultant with Yakima Health District, which was a health district that went from a hundred and fifty employees to thirty-two because of budget constraints and all sorts of things, of mismanagement and so forth. And we, three years of reworking job descriptions, handbooks. I negotiated all three of their collective bargaining agreements. Three, I mean, the first year and then three years later. We replaced half of their staff. We created urgency around good work and celebrated good work. And held those, we're not accountable, accountable. And so, yeah, it is really hard work. And I'm sure that if you contacted any of those leaders in Yakima Health District, including the three county commissioners that oversee the health district, they would tell you they're quite pleased with the outcome. And what we did was weaned myself away from them. So my message is, my job is to get myself out of job. My job is to give you what you need and the tools, and then for me to go away. Because you're strong now, and you can do this. And that's an example. The city of La Center, if you call Mayor Thornton tomorrow, actually, he's in Shalane tomorrow, but if you called him, he would tell you that we have made tremendous change in the energy of the employees and the investment. And, you know, we have to do it sort of holistically. It can't just be policies. It does have to be the training and the coaching, and the one-on-one conversations. So, but I can give you other examples as well. I can give you several fire departments. I have a lot of fire department clients that I've worked with. North County is one of them. Calso is one of them. My husband was a firefighter before I passed away, so I understand what it means, and they think that's important. So it really helps with the cultural adaptation. So other case studies and other references in there. Thank you all for your time, I know it's valuable. Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, it's just a brief comment. What an absolute pride and pleasure to see somebody with wisdom and insight and practical experience. I don't know, when I've heard someone bring together the key elements of thirty minutes, it's just really clear and practical. It builds confidence in both you and your skill. I personally have confidence in our own city as well. I do believe we need some support, and would love to see a process that led to you being here. I was really pleased that Mayor Arthur Lenders identified many of those things and began to work on an employee manual, and being able to bring back employee evaluations, just key, fundamental things that help you be a healthy department and city. I'm also really pleased that we have Director Thomas, Chief Burke, that work so hard and have that common goal. I, I hope that we have that. You can help bring that vision, both in what you shared tonight and in the future, so that we can really accomplish a lot more. Our goal in pictures, having a healthy-
Absolutely.
Good communications. Let's get rid of the problems, and let's get back to taking care of our citizens the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks everyone, thank you.
Next up, we have a public hearing to receive input on revenue services for the 2019-2020 biennial budget, including consideration of possible increases in property tax revenue for 2019. With that, I will open the public hearing, and I'll have a staff report by Finance Director Lindsay Bond. Our mayor and council, I'm going to just do a brief presentation of the property tax. So the value of essentially the one percent, I forgot to hand that person. It's just a copy of the actual slideshow, so that you can have it in front of you, or refer back to it if you so wish. So the value of the one percent for property tax, essentially, this is just going for our levy basis, just a very simple levy basis calculation from 2018. And the value of the one per, or one percent that everybody talks about, which is essentially the limit factor. And that creates the new levy amount of essentially the 1,815,635. That amount essentially takes, taking away from the original amount, the value of the one percent is the 17,977. And so that walks you through the calculation essentially of how we come up with that's almost eighteen thousand dollars. And I do want to bring to your attention that at the bottom, essentially, there is a little asterisk that says within the ordinance. It doesn't state that the value of the one percent is almost eighteen thousand dollars. It states that it's 16,980, and that is due to previous refunds that the county had to, any form of a check that had to be cut back for essentially various reasons, like senior citizen discounts, or if there was an appeal. So within the, taking the one, the value of one percent and adding in the new construction for the value of 2019, that essentially gives you, this walks you through the math of giving you the one million. And then we also, the past, there's called a, it's called a re-levy for previous year's refunds. And essentially, there's an RCW around it. And when you, and I believe this is, goes back to like the senior citizens, is when they sell property or whatnot, that you can essentially get some of that, those funds back. And that calculates back into, so into, so you add that value, you do not take it away. And that equals the 1,876,881. And also, as a part of the ordinance that's within, essentially, that is what is the big box towards the bottom, that's the value. So property tax comparison, essentially, it's the with the one percent or without the one percent. And where, where the cause and effect is happening here essentially is around our levy lid lift. So the levy that essentially this community passed in order to fund Big Rock Ball Field, the school resource officer, and the shortcomings in the IT, that is where this is surrounding essentially. So if, whether the property tax does essentially desire to be approved, or if it is not approved, that is, the red is the value of the difference. And that's why I thought it was important that you also have this in your, in your hand in order to refer back to the few socials. So with the one percent, essentially, take out the levy lid lift, we subtract that first, and then we do defer to eighty percent within the general fund, and twenty percent of that subtotal amount goes into the street fund. So the levy rate calculation, the city's assessed value is finally crested over a billion dollars. So that's just stating the assessed value. And then you take the allow, how the levy rate is calculated is just simply shown here in order to show you how they came up with, and it's within, again, the preliminary levy limit worksheet from King, that's provided by King County, to get the value of 1.42324. And that's the 2019's value. And that's the 2019's value. I guess I didn't state that that is technically the value, including the 1%. If you did not include the 1%, that levy rate would change and reduce to the value that is stated on the next slide. And here's just an example essentially of home, the median assessed home value, which is provided by King County, they don't, that's how they do it now, is essentially they just say a median assessed home value of 502,000. And using that calculation essentially, I just gave a couple of examples. One being if the property tax, if council decides to approve that versus if compared to if they don't, if they choose to so not approve that. And the variance being essentially $5.06 that ends up being a very big deal to your, your city, your general fund and your street fund. Within the property tax examples, I just went ahead and gave an additional example of a home valued at $100,000 higher than the median and then gave that calculation, using the same calculation and all the math is there for you to see. And essentially on that, on a home value of 602,000, that it would be $7.07. And then essentially as the value of a home or a district goes up, the levy rate will decrease, an opposite. So they have an opposite effect on one another. So as the value of a district goes down, the levy rate also will in turn then increase. And just to give you some historical, essentially we, when over, for 2019, the assessed value and then in 2018 and 2017, when the levy lid lift went to the, it was rolled. And that concludes my presentation on the property tax. Thank you. We do have two people sign up for a public comment this evening. And just like in, in, at the beginning of the meeting, like the public comment section, we'll ask you to approach the podium and provide your name and address and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you will have five. First name on the list is Dorit, Ms. Dorothy Langill.
My name is Dorothy Langill. I live at 27826 Northeast 156th Place here in Duval. Tonight, I'm thankful for the honest and transparent budget presented by the mayor and staff. I'm also thankful for the opportunity to testify before City Council. I agree with many of the statements and requests in the draft budget, but there are two items I feel are most important and urgent. First, we need revenues, revenues that are more predictable. Therefore, I support a $20 per cap fee and an increase in sales tax rate. Unfunded mandates, deferred maintenance, equipment replacements, almost assured reductions in federal funding and long-term required capital projects make these choices unavoidable. I realize additional taxes are not welcomed by residents, many of which value towards high quality of life. Also, there will be less likely ribbon cutting ceremonies and handshakes with familiar funders. I have to say administrative changes are not this exciting, we all know that. But I have yet to see another path we can pursue with stronger confidence. Second, I believe we need to aggressively increase our dedicated reserves and build our unrestricted fund balance, which means budget austerity for the remainder of two years. These actions will strengthen our critical long-term debt ratio. By doing so, we should be able to obtain more preferred terms and rates by new debt in the form of levies or bonds is in, are individually underwritten and placed in the public marketplace. It is clear to me, we have an unprecedented number of projects and obligations that must be financed by municipal debt. To undertake more debt, we need to implement more metrics and disciplines to make financial planning successful. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Langill. Next up, we have Ms. Lizzie Jaeger.
Actually, I signed on the wrong paper. It's for the next hearing, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. In that case, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify this evening? All right. With that, if, if staff would like to provide any type of response, we'll go ahead and do that and then close the hearing for council discussion.
Don't believe there's a response.
That's just fine. With that, we'll go ahead and enclose the hearing. And we will actually, based on the agenda, we'll move on to the next public hearing and this will be discussed under new business item number one. So with that, we'll open the public hearing on the City of Duval 2019-2020 Biennial Budget. Ms. Bond. A copy of the presentation. And I would like to enter a couple of documents, revised documents essentially into the record for everybody to have. The summary of the 2019-20 capital projects. And it also has on here a summary of the 2019-20 capital equipment that was provided within one of the documents. A revised 2019-20 proposed expenditures by funds. In the original document, it included essentially revenues and expenditures and then with the intent of trying to give, provide counsel, a comparison. It then included beginning and ending fund balances for the two years, which didn't give the true picture. And then it was also noticed that just a simple, I'm guessing typo error in the debt obligation for one of the future years was not entered correctly. So I want to enter that document correctly, too. So going over the 2019-20 proposed budget with a public hearing, let's just take one second to celebrate that this is the city's first biennial budget and this has been a process. And both directors, the mayor, everybody can agree that this has been a process. It has been challenging. It has been a great process. Definitely more people have been involved than have ever been involved historically. And I think that ultimately, although I'm, I'm sure that it's, it's been a little, it's been challenging on our part, that we appreciate council's patience through this whole process. So really quickly, I just want to go over the revised budget calendar. And that in May, on May 18th, we have a biennial budget retreat that was provided by Mike Bailey. And that was a wonderful retreat, essentially just walking us through the, how, what to expect through this whole process. However, it, it has been, I had no idea, I'll just do that right now, going through. And essentially this just walks you through, this is half of the calendar, essentially the budget worksheets. That has been a process through with Public Works and just making sure that everything's being truly as transparent as possible and that we have all the correct information. Essentially then finance, we assembled a budget, team finance, and then we took it to directors and took it forward to kind of do the discovery work and, and find out we, our, our phrase for this, this budget is essentially the crosswalk. And making sure that everything makes sense. And with additional spring group, which is our software challenges, down to the last day, we were able to still provide a budget as promised for this calendar on September 28th with a lot of really long hours that week to council. And I have to thank the mayor and both directors for that because I don't think I could have gotten our value. And then on October 2nd, that is when it was presented essentially and publicly to, publicly, because council received the full set in March of 2019. The second part of the present, or the, the calendar, what we still essentially, we have, we've had the public, we provided a lot of the department presentations. We are still not quite all the way through the department presentations. Tonight, we had the two public hearings, which we're in the middle of. And then we have the, a couple more presentations. We still have building and a couple others that we didn't quite get to. And we will finish that up and then we will allow continued budget discussions and direction from council. And then essentially going into the mayor's priorities, I think the biggest one to highlight and it's bigger than the rest is the future sustainability. And that has come, that is the number one goal out of this proposed biennial budget. The other one is, it's highlighting deferred maintenance, mandates, federal and state starting to close the staffing gaps. Essentially, we heard from Sound Solutions this evening. And the transportation benefit district funding, which is also referred to as the TBD funding and that's within the street fund. And economic development that all done after the fact. Also, then the deferred maintenance is buildings, the vehicles, equipment and IT, the proposed new staffing positions that will later be talked about in a future budget presentation, the parcs maintenance position that is also included within this, the staff workload analysis, the funding for the TBD with a $20 car tab, which there has been additional discussion around that. But I'm just presenting what is within the original proposed budget. There's lots of capital projects and it maintains the appropriate reserves. The budget assumptions on the revenue side do include the 1% property tax increase. It does include 110 new building permits, which are 55 per year, which is essentially what was decided upon that is a comfortable and reasonable amount that we'll be able to accomplish. The transportation benefit district, the water sewer and storm rates increasing by 2% and the sales tax is being budgeted at almost just shy of $2 million. It also includes a 1% utility tax increase that essentially is going to directly fund the turf replacement that has been identified as, it was originally thought to be able to be funded with the user rates. And that has now been identified that it, it is not additionally funding that replacement. And so that request is within this budget. For the general fund revenues, this is just a very visual picture of how the property tax, the sales tax, how those revenues essentially fund our general fund. On the expenditure side for the assumptions, the expenditures continue to simply outpace the revenues. Healthcare is budgeted at 5.5% across the board. It's being increased by 4.5%, but as I have learned in the past, that we have to budget for a little bit more due to the unknown of additional dependence. The public employee's retirement system, or first system is going up on both sides, essentially for the employee and the employer, but for the employer by 0.13, 0.3% of the city's contribution. It does include the cost of living adjustments for the teenagers and non-represented at 1.8%. And the utility tax increase of 1% for the water sewer and storm. On the expenditure side for the general fund, essentially within, this is actually very, very typical of most of other entities to have about 50% of your general fund going to police. And essentially there is a small mountain there and it's also going to fire general government, parcs and community finance, planning and building and engineering.